The meeting to order. Thank you, Mike. Um seating of alternates. Uh, I see Richard, Jeff, Jerry is here. So Richard and Jeff, I see my only alternate. Unless I'm missing something is Steve. So we will seat Steve for Jeff Schellinger. Which will give us eight voting members, two, three, six, seven, eight. Okay. So again, calling to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for the town of Ashford for March eleventh, two thousand twenty-four, or then oh, four, we'll call it. Again, seating of alternates, receiving seating Steve Pesh for Jeff Schellinger. And uh, moving on to the approval of the minutes. Of February twelfth, two thousand twenty-four. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve, Mark.
Mark, thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Janet. Any discussion regarding the minutes? Hearing no discussion, I'll ask that uh, those in favor of approving the minutes from our February twelfth meeting, say aye.
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 Those opposed? Abstentions? Jerry abstains for not being here last time. Thank you, Jerry. You were muted, but I saw your hand go up.
There, I'm on.
No, you're good. Thank you. Okay, we at this point, we will open it up to public comments. For items not specifically listed on the agenda, is there a public that wish to be heard at our meeting tonight? And again, you can either uh, wave at us if you've got a picture or go with an electronic uh, wave of the hand. Doug, Jenny joining us. Thank you, Doug. Okay, seeing uh, no public comment, we will move on to bills. Um, and I guess the only one I see listed here is for the Chronicle for four sixty-one. Uh, is that correct, Mike?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, no others you're not aware of?
Uh, the only other one that could ultimately fall under a bill is is under the correspondence.
Okay, all right, we'll talk about that. Uh, moving on to uh, correspondence. We received a response from the Economic Development Committee. It is part of the uh, material for the evening tonight. I would like to go through it. Uh, I'm happy to read it into the record. Uh, to share it with all. So again, this was dated February twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four. To the Ashford Planning and Zoning Commission. Again, this is from the Ashford Economic Development Commission. Ashford Economic Development Commission appreciates the opportunity to provide input to the Planning and Zoning Commission's review of the interstate interchange development zone regulations. We offer the following comments. While there's been considerable public input on what you should or shouldn't, on what should or shouldn't be built in the properties within the IID zone. Ultimately, the marketplace truly dictates what viable business would undertake development in the area. Priorities around working lands and rural character. What remains important to the community is preserving the rural nature of Ashford. That goal is clearly expressed in both the P O C D and the Open Space Plan. And requires a proactive approach to ensure that those goals are realized. As stated in the Open Space Plan, specific, specific goals, objectives, and recommendations to our land use commissions and Board of Selectmen are delineated to keep Ashford natural resources intact. To allow for development in certain areas and to create an open space town vision. Further, the Open Space Plan states that the Economic Development Commission, EDC, plays an important role in the ability of Ashford to both acquire and maintain open space. By defining the areas best suited for development, less pressure will be applied to areas best suited for open space. Let's see if we had a being anybody else come in. Okay. Many large tracts of land held by families for generations have either been developed or at risk to be sold. This fragmentation of land impacts the natural resources, vistas, the wildlife, and the future availability, excuse me, the future ability to actively work prime and important farmland. All parts of the rural character of Ashford. Studies have shown that housing development of open spaces has a negative financial impact on a community due to extra town resources needed versus the taxes paid by new housing. Education, road maintenance, fire protection, et cetera. Potential preservation of large tracts at risk should be a priority to keep the rural character of Ashford intact. A goal within the Open Space Plan is that the Conservation Commission recommends that the Board of Finance allocate zero point two five percent of the annual budget into the Open Space Fund for the purchase of open space. Yet, since the two thousand fifteen publication of the plan, it appears that no funds have been appropriated for the purpose of preserving or conserving open space. Why? It takes money and budgets. Remain challenging every year. There has been little new revenues generated to keep pace with the ongoing needs of the community. Optimizing opportunities at I eighty-four. Development with our community would mitigate some of the financial challenges facing our town. With ninety-three percent of our annual revenue coming from residential taxes, Ashford needs to be open-minded about how to fund the future services and needs of this community. Maintaining schools, facilities, infrastructure, recreation, human services, and meeting unknown needs in the years ahead. With extra revenue, the town's stated goal of establishing a committed open space fund could be realized to make meaningful progress toward protecting Ashford's rural character. Our opportunity needs to be open to business in places identified in the town's adopted P O C D as appropriate. The I eighty-four IID zone has been identified for many years as the best place to have commercial industrial development. The zone is essentially isolated from the rest of Ashford along the northern boundary separated by I eighty-four and considerable distance from Ashford's town center. Developing the I eighty-four IID zone as outlined in the P O C D presents an opportunity to convert valuable interstate access to a true revenue generating asset too. Regulations should guide future development. The marketplace in a constant state of change will ultimately control the demand. Regulations need to provide flexibility to a potential developer to propose a project that is financially viable and ultimately an asset to the community. Learning from the recent text amendment request, the regulations as written may not be supporting the marketability of property within the I eighty-four IAD zone now. First and foremost, Ashford EDC recommends that the existing regulations should not be further restricted. A number of municipalities have provisions in their zoning regulations establishing planned development districts which can incorporate mixed use or special purpose developments. In practice, such districts allow the municipality and the developer to negotiate standards for a development that might not fit existing zoning categories. We would ask that this is the meat here. We would ask that the commission to consider the inclusion of following specifications for the IID zone in order to keep it a viable potential development site. Number one, building size. Whether in a single structure or multiple buildings not to exceed four hundred thousand square feet. Impervious area not to exceed forty percent of the parcel. Building height not to exceed fifty-five feet. Warehouse and distribution function to be allowed by special permit. Uh, site to be a minimum of seventy-five contiguous acres. We believe that with the changes we have recommended, there can be a balance. We recommend Ashford seek development appropriately placed that will enhance the town's ability to achieve its conservation and preservation goals, thus maintaining its rural character. It is also important that Ashford work with businesses interested in investing resource and providing services here. Many respectable communities managed to find a balance between interstate-based commercial businesses while still maintaining a rural character and a respect for natural resources. We stand ready to answer any questions or provide any further input the commission may require. The EDC thanks the Planning and Zoning Commission for the opportunity to provide this input. Uh, sign our, yes, signed electronically, Margaret Chady, Acting Chair, Ashford EDC. So we continue to get input uh, from the various groups and uh, individuals regarding the IID zone. Is there any comment to this? Is there, would we want to bring in the EDC for a discussion regarding the IID zone?
Um, I have a couple of questions about the letter, so if we could discuss it now.
Sure, go ahead, Janet. And we also have Margie Chady joining us also, and I would open it up if there are any specific questions there.
Um, I was wondering what your rationale was for coming up with um, the four hundred thousand square feet and the forty percent impervious uh, surface.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, I think we were really looking at uh, at being flexible and finding a compromise here. Clearly, the special permit um, variance that was asked for was not um, suitable. Um, and the Planning and Zoning Commission felt like it was too much. But you know, I know you have spoken with Mr. Ratalakis, as have we. And you know, that that as zoned, it may not be as marketable as it was at the time that the zoning was written. So we are proposing that, you know, perhaps these, this compromise, you know, moves a little bit to help him with his marketing initiatives, but it certainly is not to the, to the uh, specifications that um, you know, were being looked for previously.
Thank you.
And Margie, this wasn't to put you on the spot in any way. I was just thinking, again, if you would prefer to have us meet with the uh, committee if after we've reviewed this and maybe come up with questions or something like that. I'm sure you would make yourselves available or we could come together at some point.
Absolutely. I mean, we're real, we are really interested in working towards something that everyone can live with here. Uh, because we think this is an important opportunity that we just don't want to let fall off the table. And so, yes, by all means, we would be happy to meet in a special meeting or to have a, a quorum of us come uh, to a, a, a meeting to discuss this further. So, but I thought there might be a few questions, which is why I wanted to be here, at least to feel the questions and um, and see if we can get some answers for you, even if I don't have them here.
Thank you. Mark, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I, I just had a, a question about um, the fifty-five feet. Was that due to research on modern facility height requirements or, you know, how did you come up with the fifty-five feet?
Yeah, again, I think it was looking for something that the development world could live with, right? Um, that's give, gives them a little bit more flexibility with height. Um, there certainly are um, these kinds of specifications, you know, all over the place in terms of different heights. So it's one that we felt that, you know, seemed reasonable based on other regulations in other communities that we, um, we did do some research on and something that could be worked with. Um, you know, reasonably.
Thanks.
Okay, not seeing any other questions at this time. Margie, we're going to digest this uh, a little bit. And uh, I will reach out to the group about uh, having uh, some type of a come together meeting with EDC. Uh, inviting you to, inviting you to our place, inviting us to your place, whichever works best. Thank you for the comments. Okay, um, moving on to the Connecticut Federation Planning and Zoning Agencies. Um, Mike, you have written, if you're with us, you have written down here the annual membership. I also probably want to tag on to that. Do you want to talk about the uh, membership on this?
Yeah, um, so we got a sort of annual renewal invoice um, for the twenty twenty-four membership. It's a hundred and thirty dollars for the year for the commission. So it would just be, you know, unless the commission has different thoughts, um, we would be joining for twenty twenty-four. I believe it's already within the budget or there's a lineup in the budget that could support the expenditure. So this isn't anything new. So the commission can decide what it wants to do um, and we can proceed accordingly.
Sure. Uh, yeah, and I believe we did go through the budget and put that in uh, as part of our uh, subscriptions and such. Um, has there been any update, do you know, to the uh, period, uh, the publication that they send out, Steve Byrne and company?
Um, we did get one. He sends it out in, in like a booklet form. We did get one just recently. I can, I can look to see if it's an update for case law stuff and uh, we can scan it in and get it out with the next agenda.
Okay, great. Um, also, uh, which is quite timely regarding this, um, let me put it this way, for this expenditure. How does the commission feel? Does anyone have any questions about um, renewing our uh, membership with the Connecticut Federation Planning and Building Agencies?
Um, could, could you refresh me? Aside from the newsletter, what does it do for us?
Um, well, the group itself has, and that's one thing I was going to talk about, is they have an annual meeting uh, as part of their uh, uh, membership group. And actually, that's what I was going to talk about here is their annual meeting is March twenty-eighth this year at the AquaDurf. Um, there is dinner. It gets us ten dollars off our attendance of that if we are a member, which is nice for anyone attending. Um, but it's interesting that this year's uh, uh, principal speaker and the discussion is around short-term rentals. Uh, the uh, the entire uh, section. Uh, what can be done by municipal land use agencies can control this use of land. Uh, and that's Attorney Frank Pilasey, uh, who I believe is out of the Watertown area. And um, so that's one thing. Uh, Mike, uh, anything else we get on this from them? That we gain as a town membership?
It with the membership, you just get basically the reduction and, and if they do the uh, any legal updates or whatever in their quarterly newsletter, but um, that's pretty much it.
Okay.
I think it's worth supporting, so I'll move that we um, join it, spend the money.
Also, moved to spend, seconded by Jerry. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all those opposed? Abstentions? Okay, so that is still moved. Um, what I would like to do is to share my screen.
Mister Chair?
Yes.
Uh, I, I, I wanted to try to get the question in after the motion was made, but I, I couldn't quite get in.
Oh, okay.
I just didn't know if that motion needed to be, and it might be too late to do this. Uh, needed to be amended or stated that pending budgetary approval.
Well, it is.
If, if we get budgetary approval to spend that money from the town, then we, then we join, or if we, if we already have those funds, then it's a moot point.
We are, uh, those, those funds have been passed through our, our, um, there's been no, um, feedback. Let me put it this way, there was no feedback regarding this when it was presented by the selectman. I believe you were there, Luther. I don't expect this to change in any way. We had no further reductions based from the Board of Selectmen. And the amount is not anything. So I'm, I'm pretty sure the monies will be there.
I just didn't know if we could spend that money prior to its formal approval.
Well, it's, it's, we probably have it in this year's budget too, if we needed to cut a check for this year also. So.
Very fair.
Russell be out of current fiscal.
Yeah, as, as Mike just said, it would come out of the current fiscal year. Okay, so that is passed. So again, I wanted to quickly share my screen. There we go. So again, um, the meeting is March twenty-eighth. I will be attending. I'm planning on attending. And if, if anyone would like to carpool down, um, there's dinner. Um, there's hobnobbing with other zoning officers around the country, around the state. And then there is the uh, the uh, topic of the evening of short-term rentals. So uh, if anyone would like to attend, either let Mike or myself know and uh, the uh, the town will cover the cost of the uh, registration. Uh, which is seven, uh, well, if we get our uh, membership in quickly, it'll be seventy dollars per person. Otherwise, it's eighty dollars per person. Um, the one thing is they would like to try and get one registration form sent into them as opposed to multiple forms that way. So we have until the twenty-sixth, March twenty-sixth. I'd like to try and get it into them uh, by the twenty-second, the end of, the end of next week. Um, for anyone who wishes to attend. So just let me know.
Can we let you know now, Jeff?
Sure, Mark.
I'll be there.
Okay.
Hey, Jeff, I'll be there too, Tom.
Tom. Thank you. We also gained an hour of uh, uh, continuing education time uh, towards uh, uh, though I believe both of you have taken the courses already, um, towards the uh, commissioner uh, requirement qualifications. So again, anyone else, just let me know. Uh, think about it. Check your calendar, see if it's something you want to attend. Thank you. Okay. Moving on from there to public hearing, we have no public hearing scheduled for tonight. Moving on to unfinished business. Discussion regarding the IID zone, uh, future amendments discussion. I think this is just going to be a homework assignment uh, for folks tonight, unless someone has something they really want to uh, share with the commission. Uh, and you've been staying up on some of the information we have. Um, obviously, we have the letter from the EDC that I just read into the record. We have input from uh, one of our citizens, Kristen Smith. We have input on quite a bit of input from Charles Viddick uh, regarding his information. You can go to the uh, videotape of our last meeting with Mr. Ratalakis joining us and uh, discussing as a property owner, uh, the majority property owner in that area. Um, and also I would ask that you review Article Four pages three hundred forty-seven to three hundred fifty-two. So we can have a very detailed discussion regarding uh, any type of amendments to the IID zone current regulations. Uh, so uh, not catching you flat-footed. Again, if anyone has anything specific that they'd want to share now, I'd be happy to hear it. But uh, again, I'd ask all members to do their homework and come back uh, with uh, any type of uh, input that they have. Jerry, you look like you wanted to say something.
Oh, the uh, what pages were that on Article Four?
That's uh, three hundred dash forty-seven to three hundred dash fifty-two. Under the uh, Interstate Exchange. Interchange, excuse me, entertain, Interstate Interchange Zone.
Okay.
And I would just offer, if any of the members have, if there's a project that you have in mind in another town or an area that, you know, has caught your eye or something similar to what you're considering or even a town that you're aware of that you um, want us to do a little homework on, if you just let me know, I can, there's a project I can pull the regs and the approval path for that project to give you a sense of what they have in place, or if there's a town or something that comes to mind, I can do that research so that you can see what they have on the books. If that's helpful, just let me know.
And that's something you would um, share with, if asked for, you would share with all the commission?
Yeah, yeah, I would put it together for a subsequent meeting.
Okay, great, great. Anything else from the members? Commissioners? Okay, going on to be P O C D two thousand twenty. Excuse me. Could have done that earlier. Okay, early warning system. Um, okay, the P O C D letter, as I mentioned the last time, letter has gone out to the various boards, commissions, and committees, also O T O F. Um, I've gotten confirmations from a number of boards having received it, Board of Selectmen, Fire Department, EDC, Conservation Commission. Um, and uh, e- everyone seems very, very interested in doing their part and updating it. I have gotten some feedback about uh, as opposed to just updating what's there, you know, there needs to be some writing that takes place. But I think if we can get these areas with their updates and their plans put together, it gives us some good bones to work with. Um, and again, I do know that uh, we received volunteers from the commission uh, in Janet, Luther, and myself uh, for uh, coming together as a group when working with Tyke, as well as a couple of volunteers from the community, uh, Christina Seabow and Nora Galvin. Uh, also volunteered. So I see us potentially um, doing the subcommittee bit. Um, it would be a warned meeting, just to be sure that we're following uh, all the F O I requirements that we have. Minutes would be taken and uh, the working group would then come back to the commission with uh, uh, either directions or options or where we see things going that way. But again, right now, we are still in a process of uh, gaining information, uh, calling the information from the various groups uh, and individuals and um, uh, anyone else. But again, working with Tyke is really going to be for the D in P O C D, the development part of it. Uh, the big question is always, where does Ashford see itself in ten years from now? Uh, and uh, how are we going to achieve that? Uh, it is, it isn't so much a wish list or pie in the sky as it is uh, very thoughtful um, ability to develop. Uh, and again, even as Margie Chady mentioned, in a way that is both uh, commercially and uh, rural character feasible, uh, our conservation group coming together. Uh, and again, do we want to move up? Do we want to move down? Do we want to, you know, status quo? I don't think status quo is where we're going to go with this. Um, another thing that needs to be reminded of any of these uh, developments, uh, requests. Most of them would need to be funded, and that will be the hard part for us is finding ways of funding any changes or any updates or anything like this to uh, be sure that we can follow through that it's not too pie in the sky and we can get it taken care of. Um, that's kind of the status for now. I know, I know everyone seems like it's a uh, hurry up and wait that we have, we aren't moving forward, but we are. Uh, we just need to gain the information right now so we can start uh, with a skeleton. I am really looking forward to working with Mike's group. Um, and uh, uh, taking in what they know about the uh, plan of conservation developments from other towns. Taking in what they know about the, uh, plan of conservation developments from other towns. Uh, some of the. More. Enlightened areas and, uh, what they're dealing with, I've heard some people talk about breaking out our recreation. Uh, looking into obviously some of our, uh. Uh, agro tourism. Things like this, and where does that fall, does that fall under government, does that fall under, uh, recreation, does recreation fall under public safety? So again, there's a lot of thoughtful process going on, and I really appreciate that from everyone who we're trying to gain input from. Uh, any questions on P O C D? There are any other members that would like to, uh. Throw their hat in the ring, the volunteer.
Could I just, um, I might suggest. People might want to, um, look at some other towns, P O C Ds, um. Just to see. You know, sometimes you don't have to reinvent the wheel, um, um. I know Salem has, I think theirs is almost done for twenty-five. Um, they have an interesting grid of, uh, goals. And listing all the. All the groups in town that would be, um, involved in them. Um. But I like to look at towns that are similar to ours and, um. Maybe some like Mansfield that have, um, more professional staff. So just a way to get some ideas.
Thank you, Janet. Okay. Any other input?
Not that our staff isn't great, but sometime, sometime towns have. More staff.
Yes. We'll call them resources, okay? Okay, very good, thank you very much. Uh, moving on to the informal discussion. On, in this case, it says fourteen to twenty-two, I thought it was exactly twenty-two Westford Road. Um. This is a, again, an informal discussion, we have an interested party, a potential applicant who is looking to potentially put in. Uh. Some type of business, uh, wanting to know what's allowable, um, do we have that person on tonight, Mike?
I don't see him, um, they, they have, um. They were going to be out of state doing some type of training or something related to the, the business that they. Um. Currently operate, so they were hoping to attend via Zoom.
Yep.
I don't, I don't see, um, I don't see his name on the list here, so. Um, I'll follow up with him and see, uh, how they'd like to proceed and if. If they just want to move forward because of timing, or if we want to push this to the April meeting.
Okay, um, is there, uh, are are you gonna try and contact them now, or?
No, no, I, I sent them the information before the meeting with the agenda and the link and gave them all the information. So my guess is that they're tied up with whatever they're doing, um, so I'll follow up with them tomorrow.
Not, not to steal their thunder, is there anything that you can or want to share about it, or you want to hold off?
Uh, they were contemplating a couple of different things, so I don't want to, uh. I don't want to lead with one and and have them wish I led with the other.
Okay, all right, no, that's fine, that's fine, we'll, 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 we'll make it their circus, that's fine.
Is, is, is that the, um, the red, um, colonial house on the corner?
Yes, the, the large, uh, the large tavern that, um, George Washington didn't want to stay in. Um, with the, uh, large barn and the, uh, field and, uh, what has, what was dug out, uh, trying to make more pasture land out behind it there.
How, how much land is there, do you know?
Mike, do you know the size of the lot?
Can tell you. I'm trying to, I couldn't, uh, recall off the top of my head if it's multiple parcels. Um. Wait one second.
Oh, hence the fourteen to twenty-two?
Yeah, that just, I think is, because there's perhaps multiple buildings. Um, according to the tax. Maps, uh, house was built in seventeen-ten. And it is thirty-six point five acres. Thank you.
Jeff, Jeff, the reason why they have, uh, two numbers is, uh, fourteen is the main house. And, uh, twenty-two is the other building, which actually was, uh, a residence at a time.
Oh, okay, all right. I'm trying to remember the two buildings because I was helping to build that barn when it went up, uh, with the previous owners.
Yeah. Yeah, they made a residence out of the other building, so. I, I just happen to know that because I played mailman for a while.
Okay. Thank you. All right, so yeah, Mike, uh, you get in touch with them, they get in touch with you, we can. Uh, we'll table this till, uh, when they're ready and wish to approach us again.
Sounds good.
Okay, thank you. Uh, that leads us to the discussion on changes to short term rental regulations, I wanted to not lose any momentum. Uh, on this, I think we identified the fact that we needed to do, uh, some changes to it. Uh, I had a very interesting couple of days in contacting, uh, some towns, probably very similar to what Janet and Mark went through previously when they. Originally scribe the, uh, regulations. Um. And when people got done laughing at me when I got their, uh, land use offices on the, uh, phone. Uh, we had good conversations. Uh, mostly it was me, uh. Kind of Googling the regulations, seeing the town had these regulations listed. Not finding them in their zoning regs. And calling them to find out that, oh, let's see, what do we have here, in the case of. Um. Stonington. They had regulations written up and. It did, uh, it was actually an ordinance regulating as opposed to a regulation. Um, and it did not pass in the community, um, for understand it was a close vote. But, uh, it did not pass. Um. Another group was, uh, Ledger. Ledger had put, uh. Zoning regulations together for short term rentals. That were. Trying to think when they first came out. Neither here nor there, they were sunsetted in February of two thousand twenty-two. And the, their new requirements are that they do not allow short term rentals. And they do not allow rentals for anything less than thirty-one days, thus kind of removing the short term statement in there. Uh. A couple of others, Woodstock has been trying to cull something together. And has not been able to, uh, it's still a work in progress for them. Uh, so. Again, what, what we're facing is, uh. The common theme seemed to be, uh. You know, there was some information that Mike was able to provide to me also, and I'm gonna ask him maybe to send that out. To the, uh, members also, especially the short term regulations by, uh, Kama at their annual meeting. It seems like doing a permit. Seems like the right thing to do. What I'm seeing with permitting though, is I think we're falling short. Where we could use the permitting as a way of certifying and verifying the use. Of the, uh, short term rental. Um, probably things like requirements of, uh, health district, okay, that the sewer system is okay for what they've been using. Um. Providing us with, uh, the previous year, I mean, the original will obviously be the original if they have no rentals to begin with, but. After that, when they go for their renewal, showing us tax receipts. Or certified rental periods from, uh, the groups that they work with. Uh, in order for us to make more informed decisions when it comes, more informed and certified decisions when it comes to re-upping a, uh, a, uh, permit. Um, I would be happy to stop talking right now, Luther, you have a question or a statement?
Thanks, Jeff, yeah, um, so this is a interesting, um. Discussion point, and, and so there's. I, I'm, I'm wondering, and I'd be. Very happy to hear other people's perception, uh, perspective on this. There, there's. There appears to be more in Ashford. Than just, um. Potential challenges with short term rentals, they're, they're. But from what I've seen and heard discussed, there, there. There appears to be a. A larger discussion that needs to happen about, um. Landlords and rentals in general, and I'm wondering if, if that should be. Something that's being looked at and that short term rentals is just a piece of that, and, and, and what I'm getting at is. I, I've heard on various meetings and in various conversations from people that. The ownership of some of the larger complexes in town is failing to meet the minimum standards of. Of what we would consider reasonable upkeep and, and, uh, uh. Public safety standards of their, of their dwelling units. But there's no enforcement mechanism for this. Or, uh, currently. And I'm wondering if. I don't know if it's a planning and zoning mechanism, I don't know if it's a town ordinance mechanism, I don't know if it's a building department mechanism, but what I'm wondering is if we would be wise. To have a conversation with. Mansfield. Um. You know, they're on a different scale than us with this. But they, they have a system in place where. Anyone that is. Renting. In Mansfield must obtain a rental license. And part of that, the license is a two-year license, part of the process. Um, and I'm not the expert on this, but I know a little bit about it, part of the process is. You must provide adequate parking plan, you must provide, uh, the, uh. You must be inspected every two years by the building department, they have to come in, they have to certify that. The. Unit is safe, the unit meets, uh, current. Uh, applicable codes that, that things are appropriate for the rental. And what I'm wondering is if a mechanism like that would be appropriate in Ashford. And that it would potentially just be multi-tiered. So that there was a rental license, uh, procedure for. Anyone that is renting their property to someone else. And also. A short term rental license option, and then the metrics and standards for that. License. Could be tailored specific to the concerns that. The residents have around those short term rental. Uh, items, and that, eh, effectively enforcement is. You don't get a license renewal and you cannot engage in this business if you're found to be. Uh, not holding up your end, and, and, and duration can be part of the discussion and all of that, but I'm just wondering if. This is actually a. Maybe part of a larger discussion, and I'd, I'd welcome anybody's thoughts on that matter.
Thank you, Luther, Mark. Go ahead.
I, I mean, our, our current short term. Rental requirements are, are, are pretty limiting, I mean, a, a person cannot rent it for that many weeks a year. And though I like your idea Luther, I think it might be. Financially prohibitive. To have someone who can only rent a property short term for a few weeks a year pay the same fees as. A long term. Renter, I, I, I mean, I guess I, I look at it as. As two different issues, and I don't, I don't think I'd look at short term the same way I'd look at. Long term.
Janet?
Yes, um. Been to a, a few different discussions about these issues and it, and maybe Mike. Can clarify this, but it's my understanding that towns that have a housing authority. Have more, um, ability to regulate, um. And I believe. That there was discussion in our town. Offices about trying to establish one to, um. Try and deal with these, um. Uh, large apartments and, and I. I, I agree with Luther and I agree, I agree with Mark, I think. But I think, I think they are sort of different, different issues, um. And, and, and. I'm not sure our building inspector. Do we, do we want to have, do we want to be paying our building inspector? Time to do all that, um. I think it's a good idea, but I'm not sure we can afford it.
So Janet, um, yes, the. The housing authority mechanism. Is basically it, it dovetails with, um. Like a fair rent commission, and so if the town went through the process of establishing those entities for large scale of commercial apartments like. Um, the ones that you're thinking of in town, it allows, um, for the, the town in, in certain circumstances to have control over, um. Increased rents. Um. Mansfield has the rental registration program that Luther mentioned. Um, and based upon when the rental was established. It, that sort of tells you what you can have from a, a bedroom counter and occupancy standpoint. They have, Mansfield also has a housing code. So when they're reviewing these rentals, they're reviewing them for zoning regulations, building regulations, health regulations, but they also have a housing code, and that is, um. In some ways like a design standard for how these multi-unit dwellings are to be designed. As far as air, light, ventilation, minimum square footage, um, oh, it's a, a little bit more involved than just the building code. Um. Mansfield allows short term rentals. Just as they would a home occupation, it's, uh, in most cases a staff approval. Um. So if you were operating a short term rental, you wouldn't go through the rental registration process in, in Mansfield. Um. And I don't know if there are specific caveats to all of that, um.
Mike, I have a question.
Hang on, no, hang on, Nor, Luther had his hand up, hold on. Luther.
Thanks, Jeff, yeah, uh. Mark, I think you're completely right, I think they are sort of, um. Parallel problems, and, and that's why I think there needs to probably be. Class, i- if this were a, a solution that were adopted, I think there'd have to be different classifications, I, you know, the, the fee structure. Is debatable, uh, and, and settable and all that, I guess. What I'm wondering is. Is this, and is, and, and I don't care either which way, honestly, because, um. There's a lot smarter people than, than me on, uh, looking at this, but the. We don't have, we don't seem to have any kind of enforcement mechanism for any of this really, other than withholding a permit. And so what I was wondering is if. By having a, a, a rental registry or having a, a, a rental license and or a short term. You know, rental registry. If there's a, either shorter duration of licensure, or if there's a, a, enforcement mechanism by actually having. A building official come and. Validate that what you're saying is there. Is actually there, if that's a, a means to having some kind of enforcement of, of the rules that the town deems appropriate for these kinds of uses. And, and I think that. The whole pretense of having a fee structure in place is so that. The fee structure covers the. Administrative cost of the town sending the inspector out. To do the inspections, so that it's not a cost to the town, that if it's a two hundred and fifty dollar application. That covers the time of the inspector going out. And verifying that the application is, is correct, but again, it, it's just. An opportunity to, to. Find a way to make this work better, it might not be the right one, and, and I'm, I'm fine if it's not.
No, I, I, I appreciate the input Luther, I guess, uh, Nord, you had a, you had a question?
Yeah, I had a question, uh. I don't know if you're familiar with the Henrietta House. That and breakfast, it's on Route forty-four. And, uh, it's doing quite well. It's across the street from the North Veterinary Clinic. And it's a historic house that, uh, she accepts people to come in. And, uh, stay for a few days, and she feeds them breakfast. And, and they enjoy the area, and the difference is, she lives there full time. Now, do we consider this short term rental? Now, do we consider this short-term rental?
Under the zoning regulations is permitted as a bed and breakfast, which is a separate special permit use.
It's not a short-term rental, it's a bed and breakfast, that's different, is that it? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yes, correct.
It, it's specifically identified as a permitted use, right. Thank you, Nord. Um, Mike. I hate to use this statement, but my boss, my boss's boss uses it all too many times. Uh, are we getting out of our lane? With that type of discussion that Luther was talking about when it comes to. Uh, uh, I mean, obviously, building department is not under the zoning purview. Housing is not under the zoning purview, um.
But I think that, that the short-term rental. So the other way to regulate short-term rentals outside of the zoning regulations is through an ordinance. Um. And there's the, the case to be made with ordinances. Which is in the CCOG report I gave you and some of the memos I've done for other towns on this issue is that ordinance is a retroactive. So if. If the town adopted an ordinance requiring the registration and permitting of short-term rentals. It would supersede any. Planning and zoning approval and it would apply to anybody conducting the operation, period. Um, if, if the zoning commission adopted regulations that said, moving forward, you could only rent them once per year. Anybody that had a permit or could justify that they were pre-existing non-conforming use, wouldn't be subject to those. And so the, the rub is every time we, we modify the regulation. There's a potential for some of the people that are operating to not be subject to it. Um, as far as the, the apartments and, and higher density developments. That would be something that I think would be done in conjunction with the building department and the health department, because it's. It is um. Uh, yeah, the, the issues that come up and that we hear about and, you know, not just in Ashford. Pertain more to code-related items. The health department has gone out there for complaints and issues, the building department is the same. So there might be reasons why the planning and zoning commission supports it. Um. But it would largely be for, for someone else to quarterback. Is that? Did I answer your question well, or am I?
Yeah, no, 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 absolutely, yeah, and, and it's along those lines. I ge- I guess my intent or what I was looking at as I looked through various towns here, and again, you know, it would. N- nothing here is written in stone, nothing is permanent, it's just kind of brainstorming here. I was hoping to bring the compliance. Into the land use office as opposed to the land use office and the Z E O as our se- sole enforcement group. Um, having to go out or having to. Deal with these complaints that come up as to, and they are, sometimes they're unsubstantiated. Complaints, there, there's never been an official complaint, um. It's really, you know, I saw this and I think they're doing this and they're, they're not doing this. And um, by, you know, in this case, by requiring. A group, and again, if we change it to every six months or something like that, or six months of your first um. Permit and then uh. Again, providing us with those receipts, providing us with certified timeframes and things like this. Uh. And requiring a permit, uh, again, whether it's through ordinance or whatever. Kind of a, hoping for a forced compliance or at least a, a guilt-ridden compliance that, you know, they don't want to get caught. With the possibility of then not being able to permit, not being able to use uh, this, their facility as a short-term rental. So again, uh, more brainstorming than anything else, but those are just a couple of the ways that I thought. Gave us enforcement without, you know. Giving Mike a, a gun and a badge or something like this to go out and try and do this and he's, you know, one person on a part-time basis working for us. Uh, Janet?
Hmm, thank you, um. I think it's a good idea as we've seen, um, and I, and I know as I've heard. Um. W- w- we don't necessarily want the next-door neighbors to have to come in um. Be the policeman, um, my question is, um, have other towns done this, um? Is it? Um, is it something reasonable to ask people that they? That? I think it is, but I'm just.
I would, I, I would think so, if they are running a legit. Situation and they're meeting, you know, uh, they're meeting the permitting process that we put in place, um. You know, they, they've taken the time to go get a permit from us as opposed to. Uh, I'm pretty sure we can all say that we know that there are unpermitted activities going on previous to. Our um, regulations going in place. And I, I don't think we've issued the same amount of permits as there are with activity that's out there.
Right, right. Um.
I'm sorry, what were you gonna say Janet?
Yeah, I just, I just swiped off and lost my screen, I'm sorry. Okay, it came back, um. So how, how, uh, this would go into the permit, what, uh, how do, are you proposing a change right now?
No, 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 I, again, this is just brainstorm, we would have to get this written up and looked at uh, in its entirety. Um, and again, there are the uh. Uh, the enforcement part of it too, what does it mean? I mean, I saw some of the. Groups here that if you don't get the permit and you continue to do this, there's enforceable fines to be levy besides a cease and desist order. Um, that type of thing, um. Mike, what do we charge right now for a permit itself?
We would just charge the, the standard um, special permit fee. So, uh, I think it's three sixty.
Three sixty now, oh, okay, alright. Just trying to reduce down that ninety-three percent resident tax, um.
Well, if, if somebody has not applied for a permit and is running a short-term rental. It's hard to, how do you prove, I mean, how do you prove that, um? I think that's, that's an issue, um.
Well, we could, if, if something comes to our attention on those lines, we've won, we know they're not permitted. Okay, that they, they have not applied for a permit, someone has put in a formal complaint that they think they're running us the, a uh, short-term rental. Um, we can always generate a letter and ask them to respond to the letter, you know, from our legal counsel. Um, you know, we can only go so far, but I mean, at the very least, we have, if we have steps in place that we can take, the first three steps toward. Um, you know, again, that gun and that badge, then um, you know, hopefully. More and more percentages will fall in line that way. Mark, you had a comment?
I did, um, and I think I mentioned this at a previous meeting. Um, in public hearings, that, you know, the lake associations themselves. You know, can play a role in all this. Um, you know, you know, they certainly have the ability as an association to write their own rules, regulations and enforcement. You know, it doesn't all have to fall, you know, on the town's shoulders.
Well, that was something that came up also in that uh, someone had mentioned, do we just? Do we, do we pull these regs from the lake? Districts and allow them to do with the lake associations to put together their own requirements for this. And the enforcement of it.
Can I, can I just say, um? Being on a lake or.
Hmm.
Lake Association, um, so the lake associations would have to get their members to vote on it and um. In some cases, that might be an issue because people don't want to vote additional restrictions on, on their properties. Um, it, it hasn't come up in a vote yet in, in my lake, but um. I think sometimes it's better if we provide some cover for them.
Well, I mean, I can just speak for myself and, and my brother who's down in Florida that it's, it's, it's pretty common that. In fact, most developments are associations. You know, they're, they're almost all set up as HOAs and they all have, you know, their own regulations, in fact, my, my. My brother just bought a million-dollar home in Florida. And, you know, he was thinking, oh, I can rent this as a verbo and I says, well, you better read your regulations. And uh, lo and behold, it's, you know, not allowed in, you know, the association. So, you know, associations have a lot of power. But again, I agree Janet, you have to get your, your members to, to vote, it's a lot easier if all the regs are in place ahead of time. But when it comes to verbo, you know, it's new for. Associations as well, I mean, my brother's buying in a community that's been there for twenty years and that was long before. Verbo was popular.
Luther?
Thanks Jeff, just, just as a sidebar, I mean, let us approach with peril the notion that Ashford might become run amok with HOAs. Um. That would be challenging at best for those of us engaged in farming activities. Uh, so, uh, I just have a question that I'm hoping Mike can answer, which is. Is it within? The planning and zoning commission's authority to? Develop a. Um, fee or fine, I guess more appropriately fine structure that if we, if we issue. Um. These permits, or if we find that people are conducting. Business that should be permitted. And don't have a permit, is it within the regulatory capacity of the commission to impose fines on those people?
Yeah, so the, the Connecticut general statutes do permit. Um, an interim step, if you will, between an informal notice of violation and. Cease and desist, you know, we're, we're taking you to court and it is in the form of what most people refer to as a citation. Um, and so the, the mechanism would be through the adoption of a citation ordinance, ju- almost like a fee. So the commission would. Would slash could prepare it, but it would be adopted by the Board of Selectmen as a citation ordinance. Um. The one thing that I just, while my mic is open, that I will say, I've reviewed a, not a ton of, of short-term rental. Regulations, um, but I, I've reviewed a, a number and the thing that is different about Ashford's from what I've seen. Is that we limit the duration to a number of days. So if, if there's an issue pertaining, related to how a, a short-term rental is being operated. It's, it, we can issue a notice of violation, a cease and desist, we can not do all of those things because those are tangible violations. But if the concern is that they're supposed to have six rentals and they've had seven. We can't actually document, unless we've documented the first six, we can't actually document the seven. And that sort of has created what people have come into the office and expressed concerns to me over, which is this idea that. Ne- neighbors are constantly taking note of the actions of other neighbors because they're trying to. Understand how many people are coming and going and when, and is this rental three or rental four? So the challenge that we have is regulating that frequency. Um, a citation ordinance is. You know, a pretty strong mechanism because it can provide for daily fines, which the town can collect. Um. And has a whole hearing process, et cetera, but we still have to be able to document a violation.
Thanks Mike, and, and that's, that's exactly what I was getting at is, and again. I'm only familiar at all with the Mansfield ordinances, but I know that if, if those. Landlords are found out of compliance. Um, it's a hundred dollars a day per unit that they can be fined. Uh, which is not a small. Fine structure, it, it really drives compliance. And the, the other thing that I'll just touch on that Mike brought up that I think is really important for us to think about is. Not diluting an individual's right to use their property as they see fit for enjoyment, that if. You know, if, if these people have a, a lake home and they want to be able to. Give their friends and family free use of that property, that it, it not. Um. Drive problems from a regulatory perspective that suddenly. People are claiming that they're running a business out of there when they're, they're just being kind and generous with their property to their, their friends and family. And that's a, a whole nother problem of enforcement that how do you differentiate between? Uh, you know, a, a genuine uh, kind. Use of property and someone that is trying to skirt regulations by claiming that. So it, it, it's, it's challenging.
Any other comments from commission members?
Um, I'll just say, um. If we're going to be rewriting these regulations. Um, I, I guess Mike had told us that the um, occupants. Uh, owner occupancy requirement is not legal, so we should um, take that out.
A- and, and again, it, it's funny because um, I've saw. The owner occupancy in a number of different towns with that same. Um. Type of language that way, requiring the owner to be there. Um, or again, you know, the owner agent within a certain number of hours away or something like that, I know similar to what we have, but yeah. A number of it was hosted versus unhosted, so to speak. Um, as we have it identified.
I don't know, it, maybe Mike, you could see if that's changed anyway, if we can still keep that in?
I, I.
I, yeah, I just uh, sent Jeff a case today, actually, or earlier today, there's a, there was a, a Supreme Court case, I think it was. Or a case out of uh, around Lake Tahoe. Where uh, town was brought to court over a residency requirement and the court found it was. It was not constitutional, basically, which is the same thing that Ken told us, which is we regulate the use, not the user. Um. So there are some, there are towns I was just looking at, I think it was Lime or Old Lime. Um, that have them as well and, and I think this is just something that's become a really big issue, but. I don't see that as being something that uh. Ken will ask us to, or, or suggest we leave in.
And again, it is very, uh, the first thing you see in most of these articles, if you look it up, it says Connecticut has no current uh. Legislation on this, I guess there was something in two thousand nineteen that was proposed and it died in committee. So they're really, I thi- and what, has there been what, one case law recently or something, Mike? That uh. Ken alluded to?
Yeah, there was a case, I forget the town, um, but it was. The finding and the, the, the nuance of the case is a little bit different than what we're dealing with here, but. But the finding was related to whether or not the town regulated this as a separate use. Um, from just the operation of a single-family home. And the way that the town had, had treated the issue historically led the court to find that they could not treat it differently than a single-family home. Um, I don't know the specifics of it, uh, I have the case and I, I haven't read it in a while. Um, but there is a, a bill on the floor right now. Uh, which would provide for towns to adopt a, an ordinance specifically for the registration of short-term rentals, it would. Authorize, I guess, um, the, the. Development of a short-term rental. Ordinance.
Hmm.
So what that, what happens to that bill, I, I don't know, but it, that, that has been proposed this session.
And that was actually, there were like three options from uh. CCOG, Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governors back in, well, this is back in, actually, this is back in nineteen at the time. Uh, so it's a little bit aged, I didn't think that was two thousand nineteen age, but nowadays it is with the changes in uh. The development, especially of these uh, short-term rentals, but it kind of gives the three options of uh, you know, uh. Uh, doing it by permit. Uh, zoning regulations, basically. Uh, regulating by municipal ordinance, as uh, we've already identified. Or maintaining the status quo, which was kind of what uh, Legerd had done, they, they just kind of. Didn't deal with, they, they don't identify short-term rentals, so they don't regulate them. They simply say that uh, they don't deal with. Anything, there are no rentals under thirty-one days, but as a different zoning enforcement officer mentioned to me, how do they regulate that? How do you, how does the landlord control if someone signs up for thirty-one days and says? Well, oops, I'm, I, I, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna leave, I'm, I was really on it for two weeks, so I'm gonna leave now. Um, and whatever pricing deal or whatever's worked out there, again. Loopholes, you know, everyone's looking for loopholes on this and um, you know, that was one thing, is how do you regulate that? Um, when you're forcing people to. Give information that uh, doesn't follow the thirty-one day requirement and such. So again, after the laughter quieted down when I talked to these different towns, um. And I do talk with NCOG also, uh, Delia up at NCOG and they said that they have. They are still kind of in a wait and see, I think they're working with Woodstock right now. And almost every town is different as to what they want to do and what they want to do, and for us, I guess. One of the questions to ask ourselves is what's our goal? You know, what do we? You know, what are we trying to do by regulating these short term rentals? Are we protecting the um, the, the nature of the neighborhood in and around the short term rentals? Are we uh? Uh, I know, controlling, uh, I don't know, the uh. The transient nature of the, the rentals and how the upkeep for that neighborhood would be. Um, you know, what is our goal? Janet's got an answer. Go ahead, Janet.
Yeah, well. Uh, one of the emphasis is, and I think Mark will agree with me, um. At least in the lakes is to keep LLCs from buying them and just operating them as a business, which. You know, kind of wrecks your neighborhood and um, if you get, if you get. Too much of that, all of a sudden, there's nobody who cares about the neighborhood anymore. There's nobody to participate in the lake association. There's nobody to volunteer for things. Um, and that could happen in any, any neighborhood really. And um, also. When a lot of houses become, and this is happening across the country, when a lot of houses become Airbnb's or short term rentals. It drives up the price and now no, there's no houses for families to move into. So um, I think there's a lot of rationales for, for limiting them.
Luther, thank you Janet.
Thanks Jeff. Um. Uh, I, I don't know. Uh, if this is a fair reaction or not, but I worry. About exposure for the commission if we are overtly kind of saying that we're. Crafting regs to discriminate against corporate ownership of property. And I wonder if that's something that would be better left to the lake associations because they may not have the same sort of um. Exposure that we would have, that if, if the reason we're even undertaking these short term rental ordinances is to. Try to limit uh, business venture. Um, and, and who owns the properties is that, is in, to borrow your phrase. Jeff, i- is that even in our lane? Should that even be in our lane? Is that the business we're supposed to be in?
Can I, can I just say? These are, this is re- zoned residential, so you're, we're permitting businesses in a residential area. Um, so I, I don't see that that's, I don't see that that's an issue. Um, myself.
And, and, and I only say it because if we're, if we're talking about the use, that's one thing, but if we're talking about who has the right to own these. Versus, you know, an LLC buying it up with, with the intention of having use compliance versus an individual owning it, having use compliance. I think it's important to not have. You know, a- across the board discrimination against who owns anything or, or what the use, you know, therein is.
So I don't think we're discriminating because an LLC can buy it. But what we're saying is we're making it less attractive for a company to buy it just to make money. But they can buy, they can buy the whole lake up if they want, but w- w- you know, i- it's less attractive.
Well, I think, I, I understand what Luther is saying and I think one of the concern, or one of the things is where the lake associations need to step up. I know with the Lake Chaffey. I believe, and maybe Jerry can confirm this, that there is a requirement in the deed where you can't. Um, you can't use the. The, the purchased lot for commercial purposes. And I think that came up in one of our discussions. Regarding uh, one of the lake properties or something like that now, um. And there was some case law about that, that again, it's something that Mike had sent to me to a couple of different cases. That how the court identified it as, you know, it's uh, residency and the uh. The uh, landlord was basically make, trying to make the case that, well, yeah, someone resides there. And uh, but it also had residency along with transient nature and the court went with. You know, you have, someone might, a person might be living there, but it's of a transient nature. It's not. Um, a, uh. Whatever you want to call it, that, that, i- it was for commercial purposes is really what they were identifying. And that went against what, what the homeowners association had in their bylaws. So, and their deeds, I guess. Okay, uh, I don't think we're gonna come to any uh, resolution or final uh, motion or anything on this. I just wanted to start the conversation. And uh, please, you know, get yourself thinking about the. Short term rentals, if you want to do a little uh, side work, please feel free. I think it'll be great. That uh, at least three, if not more of us going to the uh, short term rental discussion. Uh, as fresh as it will be at the uh, federation dinner will be helpful. Uh, in our discussions for the next meeting, uh, and where we can go with that. Um, at this point, any other discussion on this? Any other uh? Input? Okay, with that, I will go to the zoning enforcement, the zoning officer report. Michael, anyhow?
I've been working on a couple of things just uh, in the office with uh, the wetlands folks and. Also um, meeting with the first selectman about um, how we're gonna. Potentially, or kind of, I, I guess exploring options for how to best handle uh, the. Handful of properties or so that, that have um, more significant. Um, code issues. Uh, so we're kind of per, pursuing or looking at different options for that. Um, still working with our permit vendor on trying to get more of the uh, applications online so people can. Follow them along or follow along with them and, and submit um, at their leisure. And um. Trying to think of uh, what else we've been doing. I had one other thing that I was gonna mention.
How about the Lakeview properties? Any uh, change in the status on that?
Um, the, the Lakewood's Lane subdivision?
Lakewood's Lane, I'm sorry, Lakewood subdivision, yes.
Yeah, um, so we were supposed to have a meeting actually scheduled for tomorrow, but um. We um, the town has been working with a third party engineer. On some of the inspections and stuff, and so we had to push the meeting out of, of a week so we could all be there, so we'll be meeting on that next week.
Okay, and that's, that's the independent um, consultant?
It will be with the, the town. It'll be with the, the third party engineer and the developer, R C N.
Okay. I'm, I'm sorry.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Um, Mike said first selectmen are working on property something issues. What was that?
Uh, it's, it's code violations.
Okay.
Mike, Mike is, or is that would be, would that be a blight violation, um, or blight ordinance? That you're talking about?
Well, so we don't, because we don't have a blight ordinance or we're trying to look at basically other options or. How to deal with it from a multi-department. Enforcement uh, standpoint, I guess.
Is that something the, the planning and zoning that we could propose?
Um, I mean.
A blight ordinance?
Uh, if, I mean, planning and zoning could support something like that, but it would have to be adopted by the board of selectmen.
Ordinance has to come from the selectmen's office. Mike, the uh, and I just wanted to share for those that are either new to this, the Lakewood's uh, subdivision. Uh, had a road issue. Uh, Mike's been working with them. We uh. Um, I can't remember, not a lien on it, but there was a bond that uh, they were. At one point were willing to provide an increase, I believe, because it had been reduced down, but there was uh. An early estimate that the road itself needed about two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand dollars worth of work. Um, we've had some discrepant consultants come in with uh. Uh, some different numbers, some much larger numbers to the tune of eight hundred thousand dollars, so. Um, working with the subdivision folks and the town uh, to work with this third party. To come up with a uh, agreeable number for uh. Maintaining and uh, completing this roadway for the subdivision itself. And I think that might somewhat accurate there, Mike? Did I go all over the place?
Yeah, so when the commission re-approved the uh, updated subdivision, it was with the condition that they provide a bond. Um, the road was not completed. And as a standard course of business, the commission would require a bond. When the bank that the bond was being held by, um, was acquired by a larger bank. They simply sent the bond back and so we ended up having no money. So we didn't have funds to guarantee completion of the road. Um, so this is a, we, we're, we're working through. The final details of an agreed upon scope of work, so we can determine the value of work to be. Completed, so they can provide a bond and then we will allow um, for the sale of the remaining lots.
Okay, thank you. You did a much better job than me. Uh, anything else?
How about a uh?
Nor.
Word on the midway restaurant progress. See a lot of work going on over there.
Not in our purview, nor.
The only thing I can tell you is he asked a couple of questions about a week or two ago about signage, which tells me, you know, can't be that far off, but I, I don't know much more than that.
I'm sorry, he asked about what, Mike?
Signage.
Signage, oh, okay. Good, good sign. Sorry, bad pun. Um. Anything else? Okay, very good. Um, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Jerry, thank you. There's a second.
All second, that's Tom.
Tom Hastings, second. All those in favor? Very good. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.